Guys can hear me?
Yep.
Ready. We'll start. Sorry. Call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. And we'll get right into it. So we have five sets of minutes, March twenty-sixth, April sixth, April ninth, April thirteenth, April twenty-seven minutes to approve, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? Ed, Chris?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public communication, we have none. We're gonna go to Barbara's treasurer's report.
I actually don't have a report prepared at this time. I've been a little bit busy with everything else.
I can
We're all on track, right?
Yeah, I can certainly submit a report for appending to the minutes so that when the minutes get printed, there's a report.
Yeah, that would be great. Next was the assessors' report, but I don't see.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Jen.
Hi, everyone.
Your owner. So, welcome, welcome. I'm turning the floor over to you.
Okay, I too didn't have time to get a report together, but I will get it to you in writing. I just wanted to give a little report after the first full month of being in the new position. So, just a little synopsis of what I did. I did the M thirteen, which is a report to OPM for the grand list, filed the manufacturing and machinery and equipment to OPM also. We've done the normal monthly sales ratios to the OPM. Our maps are getting updated with Houston Valley Association. We'll have them back first of June, she says. And then, other than that, did the normal work, put in building permits. I could tell you for the month of April, we had forty-four. I'm sorry, the month of March, forty-four building permits entered out of, and I can't tell you how many total permits they took out. But with about a four million dollar value for the assessment, well, for the building permit part. But out of that, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand will be non-taxable solar. Just a couple of new houses going on, we hope. So that leaves about one point two million in permit money that will go on the grand list, hopefully. And that's about it.
Great. Any questions for Jen?
No, welcome and thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Tax refunds, we have one tax refund for thirty-four dollars and eight cents. And I'll put that in form of, we have to accept those, correct, Joyce?
Yep.
Yes.
That in form of a motion to accept the one refund, tax refund for thirty-four dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, assistant tax collector hiring subcommittee recommendation. I'm gonna turn this over to Ed.
Um. The three of us met, we came up with a recommendation. Um. I don't have the, the paperwork is out in my truck for it. I was hoping Debbie would be here. Did Debbie submit her letter to you?
Yeah, she, and she's on the call.
Oh, good. Debbie, can you, can Debbie read that letter that she'd written?
I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can paraphrase. I am happy, I did not use any names. I am happy to endorse the candidate that the three of us unanimously endorsed, but I'm just making my more unanimous endorsement. And I did suggest a salary range. So I don't know if you want to accept the candidate first, and then we'll talk money. How do you want to do it?
I would think we'd have to accept the person first.
I would agree. So the process seemed to go okay?
Yes, it went pretty good.
Okay. And did it?
Kind of a good learning process for everybody on the committee, and I think it, well, and I not concerned, I, I was kind of trying to stay as a neutral person on it, more of a listening person on the committee, because I'm not the expert on the tax collector end of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So we do have an item down at the bottom of the agenda to discuss the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Hiring guidance.
Yep, yep.
If we can sort of stick to this topic, that would be great.
Okay, so do you want a motion then? To hire, or do you want to do it later, or how do you want to do it?
Let's hire.
Let's, we should take care of it.
Okay, now, I'm not sure if I have a correct first name.
So I'm not sure that we're it's proper to be using the person's name, or if it should, it's supposed to be the candidate. Joyce, do you want to
Yeah, that's what I was wanting.
Sort of fill in the gap here of what you and I just discussed before?
Well, throughout the whole process, we've been identifying all of the candidates as an alpha character to keep things neutral. And that's the way that we spoke about them in all the subcommittees that I've worked with. It was my assumption that we would keep it that way. Unless the board of selectmen want to know the candidate, but then if somebody else gets to the candidate before we do, or another candidate, I think that's a little bit unfair to some of the other applicants.
And so the, the the, the person has not been, there's no, been no offer made, or they haven't been informed that they're the candidate that's being recommended. So there is like a chicken and egg situation here.
So is this a motion to attend and offer to rather than, I mean, tend and offer to hire, and then we're just waiting, and then if they say no, we go to the next person?
So it might make sense that we, the motion be worded something like we accept the, the recommendation of the subcommittee for them to make an offer to. We also could go into executive session to have a more thorough discussion.
That's what I could actually do.
Honestly.
You haven't done that in the past.
Yeah, we haven't, we didn't, we, we just hired Rick, and it was public that we hired Rick.
Right, so that's fine.
Right, we spent an extensive time in executive session discussing, in discussion as well, before.
Right, but this isn't, this isn't, and I guess in my opinion, it's not necessary to, to discuss because we have the recommendation from the board, the, the subcommittee, and that's really the goal, is for them to say, this is what we think, we're unanimous, let's go. Yep. I mean, the only thing that I, and help me here, and I'm picking up on what Joyce said, the only thing that I would see is if the person then said, well, actually, I took a job in town, why? And then the, that person's not, I don't know, embarrassed or whatever, and then the next person can be offered it, but help me here.
This, this person is waiting for you as a board to go to this person.
Then I say, we, then I say, let's do it.
Someone make a motion.
Well, do we need, did Joyce, did you put a, a number next to that person's name? I know, we, I got the number off for the park and rec person, but I didn't get a letter number for the person for the tax assessor. You know what I'm saying, Joyce?
She would be E.
E?
E as in egg, yes.
Okay, so I, I would make the recommendation uh that the
We're taking the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Right. So I'm making the motion as, on behalf of the subcommittee.
But you, you're, I, I'm not no, because you're a, a member of the board, so you want to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the subcommittee. I would think.
Yes.
Right, right, which I, I, right, so I make a motion that that the motion, number, person, lettered E for for the board of selectmen to consider hiring into the assistant tax collector position. How's that sound?
I'll second that.
Any further, do you have that, Joyce?
Yes.
Can you just read it back?
To accept the recommendation of the subcommittee to, to hire candidate E for the assistant tax collector position.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks to the subcommittee as well.
And we need to discuss now, we need to discuss the hourly rate.
Okay.
Barbara, do you, not to put you on the spot, so the recommendation from Debbie in her email was twenty dollars an hour. The job description states, I'm just reading this from Debbie's email, just for clarity. The job description states, an assistant must become certified by the Connecticut Tax Collectors Association in no more than five years. The twenty dollar per hour salary allows for an increase of one dollar per hour upon the sex, successful completion and passing of each of the four courses and final exam. Any COLA increase would be in addition to the one dollar per hour.
Okay, so what's your question for me?
The budgeted uh current would be using the current budgeted hourly rate, just to make sure that it were within the budget.
We're way below, the current hourly rate is twenty-five.
Thank you. And so Debbie, just so I'm understanding, the says an increase of one dollar per hour upon the successful completion and passing of each of the four courses.
I, I did this simply because I thought it was incentive. If it would make it easier for you to go in at the rate that's already in the budget, I'm sure she will accept that and just not get an increase for the courses. That's, that's fine. I, I don't want this to be a stumbling block.
The current rate for that position is twenty-six seventy-three.
Oh, more than I thought. I was gonna give her twenty-five.
Well, I would go with Debbie's suggestion, because just going back to the concept that we were trying to do a number of years ago, was to level the, the assistance pay salary, so and the concept was if somebody came in new to try to, you know, incentivize them, so I think that that does make sense.
So would you go with the recommended twenty dollar per hour, Chris, as she was saying, and then the dollar each?
Yep.
Or whatever that figure is to get it up to the twenty-six seventy-three level?
Correct. And again, because Debbie is the, the you know, her, her, her boss, in, in effect, we want to make sure that that person meets the expectation of, of what Debbie, Debbie needs.
So let's put it in the form of a motion. I'll make that motion to offer the candidate starting rate of twenty dollars an hour.
And you want to put the stipulations in? Just something? Well, the incentive, I should say, not stipulations.
Sure. So is it one dollar per hour per course?
Yes.
So that maxes this person out at twenty-four dollars an hour?
Twenty-five, there are five, plus the final.
Oh, the final, so it's a dollar for each of the courses, each of the four courses, and then another dollar when they pass the final exam?
Yeah, you know, this is going to take a period of years, so over the course of the years, maybe we could incentivize it a little bit more, but as of today, this is the start.
Okay, and I think that, that's, I know we're we're not in discussion point, but I agree with Debbie, I think we keep this person, if Debbie believes it, in next year, if you will, but this is warranted more than we do more.
So I'm, I'm not really sure how to word this motion.
Well, the classism, the course is a mandatory, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think you should say that for each level that they achieve, they achieve one dollar increase.
And
A maximum up to twenty-five dollars, and at that point, then you've got it.
Okay, so I get all that, but patching that together into a cogent motion.
If you just read the sentence out of Debbie's email, do you still have that up, Jean?
The twenty dollar per hour, hour salary allows for an increase of one dollar per hour upon the successful, successful completion and passing of each of the four courses and the final exam.
Second. There, perfect.
Okay. That's what we want to call a motion, fantastic.
That's good.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Everybody.
You will be getting in touch with her tomorrow?
Joyce?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a resignation letter from Ty Kearns, to whom it may concern, it's been my pleasure to work for the town of Kentland use office over the past four years. I sincerely enjoyed having the opportunity to work for such a talented group of professionals in this department, for whom I have the utmost respect. Additionally, I'm grateful for my time serving such committed commission members in such a lovely town. That said, I feel it's time for me to resign my position to explore new opportunities. Please accept this as notice of my resignation effective April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I appreciate the faith you've had in me to allow me to take on many different responsibilities. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to offer my assistance in a smooth transition. I am grateful for the experience and will very much the interaction with Kent's employees, commissions, and communities. Thank you so much for your understanding, Ty Kern. So we just need a motion to accept that letter.
I'm moved.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the
So what's this resignation mean in terms of next steps to hire, Donna? We
Well, we email their process. Sorry, go ahead, Donna.
Um, I created a hiring subcommittee with, within inland wetlands, I'm gonna be creating an hi, a hiring subcommittee within planning and zoning. It's been out on Indeed, it's been posted on the town's website, it was shared with the department heads within the town hall. I've got about eight applications from Indeed that I'll be going through. I've talked to Warren, I've talked to Salisbury, because they're both looking for part-time people, we might be able to do some kind of job share. And then I'm gonna put it out on the Casio listing. And then as soon as we rifle through and decide who we want to see, then we'll make our decision and make the presentation to you guys for hiring, just like Debbie did.
Okay.
Jean, you're muted.
Thank you. Interim Park and Rec Director Hiring Subcommittee Recommendation, I'm gonna turn that back over to Ed. Did I, oh, there he is.
I'm here.
I got a shuffle of the pains.
I guess we're gonna do the same thing we did before, we went through a a, a group of, actually, a lot of great candidates. I have Julia's, who's both here, she was gonna make a motion, but I guess I have to make the motion, but I think she could make the motion perfectly fine as, as from the subcommittee. So we prepared it, correct?
Well, as a board member, a board member needs to make a motion, but absolutely would be happy to hear from you, Julia.
Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
I don't need to. I, I was just going to say that our recommendation was, the recommendation for the board was for candidate M, M as in Mary.
Right.
Wants to make that motion.
Okay, then not, that, that's what I'll do, then I'll make the motion from the subcommittee to the board of selectmen that we hire the interim Park and Rec Director of candidate M.
I'll second that. Just discussion. The interim position is to do the functions of the Park and Rec creation directors, only a portion of it, correct? Well, can you, can you clarify or expound on that?
I was hoping we'd be a lot farther by now, but we've gotten delayed on this whole thing, so right now, hopefully, they will be doing as much as they possibly can at this point in time.
Okay.
They're still relying on the Park and Rec committee themselves to do a bunch of the park facility information. I think this candidate will actually pretty well suited to be able to handle any function that that person might have to, to do at this point.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
And next, we need to
You need to make a motion for a salary, an hourly rate for that person.
Yep, that's where I was going.
I'll make the motion that we start this interim position, since it's gonna be a no guarantee that they're gonna, going to be hired full-time or anything at this point in time for twenty-four dollars an hour. And I believe the, it was, we had a range of twenty-two to twenty. I'm not sure what the top range was, but I figured we'll go in the middle of that, hopefully, they'll accept that position.
I'll second that.
And Barbara, looking at the budget, is that within the alignment? It's hard, because it's not, it's not gonna be a full-time, have you discussed the number of hours for this position?
Well, we had discussed, we're gonna try to keep it at twenty, but and we, Leslie Ferris never really le, left us with a completed list of how long it takes, so I don't really want to put a total on it until this person is in for a couple of weeks to see what they can do, and I would say it's probably gonna be at least twenty hours a week. But I don't know, being perfectly honest with you, I do not know.
Well, I think the budgeted line should at least be sufficient to cover. Is that accurate, Barbara?
What was the hourly rate? I apologize, I wasn't focused.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yes, that's plenty, you've, you've got room.
Yeah, because it's, we're really comparison, comparing the is that
The currently hourly rate for that position is twenty-five forty-seven, and that's based on a forty-hour work week, so
Right. We're fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the disbanding of a subcommittee.
Make a motion that we disband the assessors' hiring subcommittee?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you, guys.
No, I thank Joyce, too, for helping everybody as much as she did, walking everybody through the process and being available when we could.
Thank you, Joyce.
Next is highway maintainer position discussion. Rick, you're on deck.
Mentioned a few meetings ago that this position currently is a non-CDL driver. I would like to see it go up to a CDL driver position. Money in the current budget line to cover that. And over the past couple of months, since we talked about that, there's been discussion from the board and other people about a building maintenance person or somebody like that, and if I wanted to discuss with the board what they, what their feelings were on that, because I don't think that should be a actual union position, probably.
Can you do that?
If you're hired through the, they would be tired under the first selectman, then.
I see what you mean, outside of the highway department.
Garage.
Right.
And is there any anything that they can't do, or like, I guess my, my question is to, how do you make it so that there's no lines crossed?
They probably wouldn't be able to use anything down at the garage, or
Okay.
So if you're gonna have them if you wanted somebody besides the union guys to mow lawns, then either they have to contract the lawns out, or buy more, you know, give up a mower for that person, but I don't think we would have the union guys repairing the mower and stuff like that, then, because that would be probably creative grievance, but
Right.
So my question also would be is, so then the way the job description reads for a CDL driver, if all of a sudden they were told they needed to go empty the wastepaper baskets in the town hall, could they refuse?
No, they do that currently, so.
I'm just asking, I, you know.
Right, so the, the, the position is a CDL maintainer, so it's not specific to they're not a, a CDL driver, they have that license, but they're doing other tasks besides just driving, so and they do, they empty the garbages on Main Street.
I'm, I'm just asking.
All sorts of
Yeah.
But they, but then they, of course, qualify for that, that salary.
Correct. Without the CDL, though, they can't drive the larger trucks.
Right, of course.
Right.
Is it helpful if we have someone like that, because you can shift them up if somebody's out or sick, or
Somebody's out, and to help out with me, if I'm doing other stuff, they can take my flower
Okay. And what's the, what's the the salary difference?
I believe the last time I fair, I'm not the, the current project, not the new one, I think it was ninety-eight hundred for the year. That included in the eligible overtime and all that, so.
So the increase is ninety-eight hundred above what is presently being paid, is that accurate? So the increase is 9,800 above what is presently being paid. Is that accurate?
It would be possible to make that much more. That that's projected 200 hours of snow overtime, 5 hours of regular overtime.
That's that's a potential.
Yep.
Just the straight hourly rate is a non-CDL is 2724 and a CDL is 3115. Is that right, Barbara?
Correctly.
Sounds right.
I think it makes sense to have that backstop of somebody who is able to you know, that has the CDL.
So just until I'm understanding, this person will have a CL, they'll be a backup, they'll have an increased salary, but they're the ones that are going to be doing the maintenance?
Not necessarily. If you wanted to break the maintenance, the building maintenance away from the highway department, which was talked about a couple of meetings ago.
Right, well, let's just
the building maintenance.
Right, I don't I don't see the economics in that. If if indeed you know, if it's if this person can get $10,000 more, I'm just rounding up potentially. We'll pay more than $10,000 to have a person maintain town hall, right?
Well, barely, no. Weren't satisfied with the building maintenance going on before, so there was talk of hiring somebody else, but is that non-CDL position gonna be responsible for all the building maintenance and then not be down doing highway stuff or?
So the two position job descriptions as they read right now are highway maintainer with CDL and highway maintainer without, and the job qualifications. The essential job functions, it looks like they are pretty much exactly the same.
For the equipment operation, I think they are pretty all the same as far as
Yeah, that's
what they're expected to do with a weightlifting and all that stuff.
Yeah, and yeah, it's basically a special job requirement on the CDL that says must have valid commercial driver's license. They they're pretty much mirrored versions of each other.
I'm basically looking for more guidance from the board as far as what they as far as the building maintenance and stuff like that, what what you're gonna expect if you didn't think being done enough before.
So help me here. What is built, what is the building maintenance? I mean, if there's something with the HVAC, we call we call an HVAC person. If there's something with electric, we call an electric person. If the roofs leak and we get a roofer, what does the maintainer do in the building?
Well, I think your questions about paint touch-up and moving stuff around, which we help out doing, a lot of discussion with the Swift House was that nobody was taking care of it. I don't know what you're gonna expect from there as far as anything inside. I mean, we whether you're gonna expect the maintainer to be doing touch-up paint on the inside, outside, or or just right now, we just mow lawns and if something's fallen down, we'll put it back up until somebody can fix it, but I don't think
There are other sort of ad hoc tasks that you guys help out with, like the, you know, if there's a big piece of furniture that needs to be moved if in the community house. Every, you know, back when it was still open pre-pandemic, if the garbage needed to be taken out, stuff like that.
No, we do all the garbage pick up, especially on month, usually Mondays after any weekend events. And all the street garbage at the same time, so.
Well, I guess what I was just getting after, if there's a maintainer, there are, I guess, three avenues that I would see because what we've been doing. Hiring our own person or contracting out.
Correct.
And so contracting out the lawns and contracting out of somebody to do, come in and do touch-up painting is probably fairly easy. It's probably not easy to contract out somebody to come in and just move a filing cabinet around.
No.
But I don't, it doesn't preclude you from doing maintenance, even if we have a, if if we if we have, if we're contracting out all those things, it doesn't preclude the highway department from coming in and moving something, correct?
No, doesn't.
Okay. So I guess the question is, it's a $10,000 difference, if you will. Can for $10,000, we get some, can we contract out little projects on these buildings and then alleviate the the need for one of our highway department to be doing all of that?
I don't know. Aren't we, isn't that number sort of representative of having someone who's got the extra qualification as a CDL driver? So we wouldn't be able to, it's not like it doesn't replace, you know, we wouldn't replace that, we wouldn't be able to use that to contract for paint touch-ups and you know, other errant odd jobs. It's really what we're paying for there is to have the extra qualification of a qualified driver. So there's, it's sort of apples to oranges to me.
Yeah, I just, I I maybe I'm missing the 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 need, the need here. I thought is the is the need to get somebody to back you up as a driver and there and also, I don't know, all the other things that they can they can do that they can't if they're not a CDL, or is the goal to have a backup? I I'm just a little confused. And have a maintainer? I I I'm I'm lost on this.
Well, if we just replaced the position like it was before, he was originally hired just to work out the town hall. He wasn't hired for the highway department.
Okay.
Over the years, it migrated down to where he became a highway department member.
And that was many, many years ago.
Yep.
More than, more than 10.
So in the various discussions over the last couple of months, that was, I think, brought up whether we should, there should be a person just for that. So before I fill this position, either way, I wanted to find out, yep, the person that I choose is gonna be asked to do all the building stuff and then not spend so much time with the highway department, or is it gonna be more highway department and just go up when on a as-needed basis? Not spend half the day in the buildings each day or something like that.
But did the last individual do painting? He would like, and like, I'm sorry?
You're doing a touch-up spot now. If somebody, you know, moved a picture, throw some spack on the hole and patch it up, but
Okay.
As far as repainting various rooms, I don't I mean, we haven't painted any single rooms in the town hall. The community house is a different story because you got a lot of damage from events up there where somebody's gotta go in and we've gone in and done that, either myself or Jerry goes in, he's the other maintainer. And spends time up there painting, but.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And so does, so I guess the question on the table is, do we have a do we need a highway department person to be a maintainer? It seems a little different to me, and as Jean just said, you've got somebody who's a CDL driver, their license and their skills are more that than touch-up paints and 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 things like that. And it also seems clear to me that the buildings probably need a a pretty good review annually and then a rotation of painting and spackling and
Right.
you know, what you won't, what you'll, what you'll won't have is somebody to move stuff, but if you can still call them the highway department to do that, I think that that's, I think we really look into maintaining these, getting a building committee to maintain these buildings the way they are supposed to be maintained. And I would take that, I I would think it would be smart to take that off the highway department's shoulders. But I don't
Interiors or well, even exterior, but
I mean, you're not gonna do siding.
What about the lawn mowing and that stuff also? I mean, I've heard complaints that you expensive union guys are running lawnmowers, but do we?
Well, I think that's just a cost analysis, what one would do and, you know, hiring a contractor versus hiring within. I can't answer that. I don't, I does anyone have an idea? Well, I don't think we need to get that into that that deep in the weed.
Getting in the weeds, very much so. So really, the question is
Do we need to make a decision now on this?
Well, I don't want to advertise the position unless I know it's just gonna be a maintainer or a CEO maintainer.
Okay, but tell me again, when you say maintainer, do you mean the person who's going to be primarily responsible for the buildings?
No, no, the title of the position is main is a highway maintainer without CDL, a highway maintainer with CDL, so.
Right, so why?
Straight out of the box. That's what they're called.
And so you're filling a position because that position we had traditionally?
Well, it was
Position became vacant when John left.
Okay.
And he was highway maintainer without
And he was not a CDL highway maintainer.
Right. So Rick's question is for this
Okay, thank you again. So how much, how much percentage of time was being worked at at the various places that? I mean, do you need, do you need another full-time guy? Is that what is that what this thing is about? That the question?
Well, the question is to replace John's position, I would prefer another CDL driver.
I get that.
All right, so the, what I'm asking the board is would you let me do that, or do we have to just stay with a non-CDL for budgetary purposes and hire a non-CDL person?
And I, right. And my question is, if 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 John was doing a certain portion, how much of how much of highway department stuff was he doing versus the the other things?
It's, well, basically some lawn mowing and the sidewalks.
And and garbage and, you know.
Uh, some garbage. He got towards the end there, he couldn't pick it up, but
Right, right, right.
We would help on that, but so most of those time every day was spent doing stuff in buildings or riding around checking stuff.
And the union contract stipulates that they're they're the regular hours of employment for all bargaining unit employments are 40 hours a week, so it would be full-time position.
Right. Okay.
You had asked that question before, Chris.
Yeah.
And and do you, do you actually equalize overtime amongst the employees? Because you just brought up a statement, Rick, saying that the CDL driver would be doing your route, maybe? Which would mean you're on salary anyway, so this person would take over your route, and you would basically be riding around in your pickup doing things like that?
Well, this year currently, I've been doing the parking lots and stuff where, since John wasn't there, but but yes, that and helping out with splitting some of the bigger routes, making them a little bit shorter, so.
And there is something in the union contract about distribution of overtime as well.
Right.
I think we've the only complaints I've ever had about overtime is from, maybe from a non-CDL where they don't get called in.
Right, that that was
Little stuff where
Are any category, do they get equalized amongst each other?
Each and each category, yeah.
Thank you, okay.
It's within the classification, so.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just trying to catch up here with this train. So I'm just slightly confused here. So if you're hiring another guy or another person right, to fill that position?
Right.
That person is gonna be doing basically, maybe ask it differently, how much have you missed that that position? Work-wise?
Normal highway work, we haven't, because that he spent he was hired to do a lot of small building stuff, and that's what he spent most of his time doing. Where I would prefer to have another person out on the all the projects with us.
Okay, well, that's not my question. My question is, John John did a certain amount, and he's now not there. That position is not there.
Right.
You guys have picked up the slack on that, so that either you've done it all and it's been no problem, or there's been a problem because you haven't been able to do it all. Which one is it?
Well, we've done it all with spending more time doing it.
Any overtime?
Yes. There's more, if I'm doing parking lots instead of out on the road, Jerry's doing the sidewalks and so so that's put more, longer made the routes out on the road longer, so that takes longer to get done.
And the grass is just starting to grow now, so.
Well, Jerry spends pretty much the whole week just throwing, mowing grass, so.
Right. So I'm just trying to understand that because it, you know, I guess that's to me the I wouldn't want it to fall in where we hire another person and then not doing those things, and then we have to hire a person to do those things. Is that, and so that's not anticipated, I hope.
No, I want another person to be out doing road projects with us and be able to drive a truck. This, the amount of time the current guys are able to take off and like, especially now, they have to use it up or lose it by the end of June, so we have a lot of time off, so another driver will definitely keep stuff moving better.
Yeah, no, I I get that. I guess the the question is, if we have a job lift list that we start to put together for each of these buildings, do we get that person, or do you get that person out on the road? You see, that's that, I guess that's where I was going.
It'll create the 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 ability to have that person be in in a dual role.
Okay, well, um.
I mean, if you're gonna do that, I would prefer to, that gets done before we decide to hire somebody, see how much time it actually take. If they're gonna be doing it 30 hours a week, then you know, that's only 10 hours to be out on the road, and that's definitely not gonna help out very much. But they're always going, you know, checking trash and putting out the flag, then boom, you do that and you come out and work. If you want, think about it, we'll discuss it the next meeting, but I just don't want to advertise the job until we make a decision on which way it's gonna go.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'm I'm concerned with is just making sure that that we're getting the coverage on the town hall and all the other buildings that we were getting before. I guess, I mean, that's, that's how the, that's how it was set up, so to me, the maybe a bigger question is, maybe we need to look at the whole maintenance of of all the buildings and 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 then that frees you up to to do the highway stuff. And then rather than a, I mean, in effect, John was a half guy, or if not, maybe even less than a half of a of a of a guy for your town crew, correct? If you wanted to put Of a, of a, of a guy for your town crew, correct? If you wanted to put job description, job description.
Yeah.
So really what you're asking for now is more than a half a guy. You're asking.
And if I could just say, and originally it always was all CDL drivers and one person doing the other stuff. But we also had a working foreman that was out on the road working every day with the crew, and now Rick's done a lot more administrative stuff. And we eliminated the CDL position because we added. The, I believe anyway, the Kent Center School mowing, so we eliminated the CDL position and went with the two. Non-CDL people that were gonna help out more with the, the other issues in the town hall. And all that stuff, and now we're back to eliminating the second non-CDL position and going to a. Full-time CDL position, and I will agree with Chris and what I've been saying all along. We pay a lot of money out in custodial fees at the town hall, and maybe we should have looked into that. And we kind of, and it's not Rick's fault, we haven't been discussing it because we've been so busy with all this other stuff, the budget situation. Um, because I can tell you right now, my feeling is, we add a CDL driver to the town group, they're not gonna be coming to the town hall. And the community house and the swift house, because it's gonna be a budget, it's gonna be hard to figure out as, in Rick's position. They got a crew that's going out patching, and then they need four or five guys, he's gonna say, well, we're gonna, we'll put that other project in the. Community house off for a couple of days, and I understand that. It's a tough schedule and all that different stuff, and stuff's changed day to day. If you have a tree come down. And I don't blame Rick also for wondering, when are we gonna fill this position either? Because it's been vacant for a pretty long time, too. Um, my situation is though, if either we fill it with a CDL person. Which. Does that give us back up to the original people we used to have originally, Rick? Do you remember?
That was, uh, right now we have. Uh, we have five plus myself. And one, one non-CDL, so.
Is that what we used to have years ago in the town on the highway crew, uh, crew? Do you remember? It was, I think, a five plus one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But you didn't have a mowing person. They were all considered.
Well, we used the contract out hired.
Right.
They come in and run the roadside mower and.
Right.
Stuff like that, where now that one of our guys runs it.
Right.
Well, Ed, do you think it would be, is it, is, again, I'm out of my league here, but it would be smart to. To hire a contractor to do this kind of stuff and, and alleviate the, the. You know, the, the issue of stress on, on the highway department, or does that not make sense? Because somebody's got to coordinate it and some.
I think it's a lot like the position for the park and rec where they wanted to hire somebody for the summer. But if you just have a contractor come in and maybe once a month for a day. Do all that stuff that, unless it's an emergency. I think it works out. Better that way than hiring somebody part-time like summer help. So if you had somebody that. Walked around, checked all the buildings, made up a list of stuff that had to be done, and had a. Some contractor from town that could do minor repairs and stuff like that, come in. A day or two a month. And do it all. That would probably. Work out a lot more as far as fiscally in the end, better, but.
Because in years past, we used to sub, we used to bid out Emory Park mowing. Um, the cemetery, I know they've kind of taken it over and done their own. As far as the bidding out stuff process, they've done their own, but we used to bid out Emory Park, and I don't know if we bid out the other stuff, but. I mean, years and years and years ago. Summer help. And I don't know if we can contract out summer help or not for mowing and stuff. I guess we could if we took mowing out of the highway crew description.
Uh, we can, like, contract, we can hire for a certain number of hours each year, as long as they aren't putting, uh. You know, taking work away from a regular position.
And Donna's saying. The.
If Rick, the CDL driver, have the non-CDL driver cut the lawn at town hall and use the visitor center cleaner to clean town hall. Yeah, there, so I.
Well, I get a little bit more than cleaning, you're, you know, if you're. Good. Meeting rooms to set up and take down or. And, uh. Minor repairs after events at the, which the current cleaners been willing to do sometimes.
And right now the highway crew does that?
I have to. If she didn't have the trouble, then we were going and. One or two of us going, if you had to repaint three of your walls after a party, then to get it done before the next party.
Didn't the highway crew used to set up for town meetings and things like that, tables and chairs and them away?
John did that a lot, yeah.
Uh, Lynn was asking if, um, we could clarify if John Lindsay, what his position was, a union position, yes.
Yes, it was a non-CDL.
Right.
So it, it makes sense, I think. There's a lot of different issues and pieces we've brought up, and Rick, if it. If it works for you, I'd like to. Keep this open for next month, and we can gather some more information and bring it back to the board, so we have a little bit more. Just looking at. The three, four buildings, what. You know, where things were, how things were done, and just get a little. Get a little better information to bring to the board, so we can make a. Better recommendation, or if you want to just say, let's make it a CDL, we'll make it a CDL. I, I, we've spent a long time talking here and I. I would certainly like to get a little bit more information from Joyce. She's, she does a lot of the arranging for the contractors and. You know, I don't know as far as efficiencies, as far as, um, you know, I get calls for when there's a. Trouble panel alert here, does it make sense, you know? All of these things, do they all add up to hiring a part-time person, or do they not add up to hiring a part-time person? I think we need to gather some more information.
Okay. Um, just for, for Rick. How, I know you've been running shorter, if you will, so. What's, your timeline, of course, is tonight, but what if? What if we wait another month? Is that going to crunch, especially with lawns? Uh, you know, with grass growing or?
No, I and Jerry will probably take some time off, so either myself or one of the other guys have to fill in.
Mm-hmm.
During his vacation time, but.
And you can't. Contract this, right?
What's that, Ed?
You can hire subcontractor to help if someone's on vacation, fill in and mow for a day or two, right?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, if we hire somebody in the beginning of the new budget year, that's fine.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll gather some more information and maybe have a special meeting, but at worst, we'll come back at the next. Monthly. Town meeting, um. So up until a couple of hours ago, the executive orders were expiring. At midnight on May twentieth, and which meant after many discussions with. Town council and CCM and cost and the cog, um, that was going to mean. The options for, um, the town meeting on the twenty-first are either a hybrid. Which means, um, a, at least a teleconference option and in-person or all in-person. Um, we just had a walkthrough with the vendor today to look at, um, creating a hybrid. Model down in the big meeting room. It's unlikely they'll be able to have it in place and get us trained on it by the twenty-first, so. Up until two hours ago, it was gonna be an in-person meeting. I just heard literally a couple of hours ago that the governor may extend the executive orders, which would enable us to. Um, have it via Zoom, so I need to. I need to find out some more information, hopefully in the next twenty-four hours, on which version of this we're gonna be looking at.
Jean, is, is part of that because of just the amount of people in a specific square footage? Or is it just because they don't want gatherings of X amount?
Under. In relation to, I'm not sure I understand.
I'm one, so let me ask, if, if, what if we did it in the, the school gym? Which we've had budget meetings there before and other meetings before, town meetings, and you were able to space people further apart.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if it, is it a, is it a?
It's not, it's less about space. We could have the option to do it in the gym. I asked over to Kent Center School. It's really the executive orders, if they extend them, it makes sense to offer it on Zoom. We've had a lot of feedback that. Zoom is, is, you know, has become a usable way for people to access. The meetings.
So, just so I understand it clear, clearly, the executive order is. A recommendation, or is it, is it an actual, you cannot have a meeting?
Um, it, I would have.
In person, sorry, an in.
I'd have to go back and look at the, thoroughly, um. Any, uh. Way in on this while I, I, I just want to be sure that I'm giving the right answer to the question. It's gonna take me a minute to look up the actual language.
I think the, the executive order, the initial executive order implied that meetings had to be held. With the option of Zoom, so, um. But again, there's been amendments to that along the way, um, so.
Yeah, I, it would take a, we're, we're at, what are we at, a hundred and ten executive orders or something like that, so. It would take me a little bit to get your answer, your question answered, Chris. I couldn't answer it tonight. The specific question you're asking.
Well, I guess that's, that's, oh, I'm just wondering is, is if we make provisions such, are we allowed to do it or not? And not to say that.
As such, or what?
Meaning you would, I would imagine you would have to do, if you decided to say, we're gonna have an in-person, uh, town meeting. I would imagine that you would also have to provide Zoom access, because not everybody's gonna be comfortable coming into the in-person meeting.
It depends on if the executive orders expire. If they expire, then the only, um, the only language in the statute is for a teleconference. Other, otherwise the FOI calls for meetings to be, public meetings to be held in person.
So with that, can we assume? That we could right now decide to do an in-person town meeting. And also provide Zoom unless they say you don't have to provide it. Is that right?
The executive orders are extended, we can do hybrid or Zoom.
Okay, so, given that, so. So it doesn't matter, we're either gonna have an in, in, in-person town meeting with no executive orders, or we're gonna have an in-town meeting. Uh, with a hybrid.
Or, or we can, if, if the executive orders get extended, we can also have a Zoom, solely Zoom meeting.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at. If we can have a hybrid, why wouldn't this town choose to do a hybrid?
It, it goes back to the executive orders.
Chris, plus we don't really have the technology to do the hybrid meeting properly right now.
Okay. Alright, that's the answer.
And I don't know, I. I asked Michelle if there, um, if the gym, if they, if we would be allowed to. Um, come in the building, and actually, when she got back to me from the superintendent's office. They would, they would house it in the cafeteria. That's. That's what came back from the region, and they've been aligning. Um, you know, everything is going back up to the region office to, just so they're, they're all aligned, so all the schools are. You know. They're, they're trying to be consistent.
And when, when is this new order coming down, or when, when do we know?
I have no idea. I scoured the internet for about fifteen minutes. I asked, um, David and Eric haven't seen anything. I haven't, but I'm. Does not surprise me at all.
And the meeting is scheduled for?
May twenty-one. Probably gonna need to have a special meeting because I need to, I need a little bit of time to. As it has been for the last sixteen months, it's changing on a dime. I had a, I had a rock solid answer a couple hours ago.
Well, I guess if, if we don't have the technology to do a hybrid meeting, then we can't do a hybrid meeting, right?
Correct.
So by.
Don't know if at the, um, if at the school there, they have the technology. So I would have to ask that question.
Well, I think that might be a good question, because if we can do that, then we can do that, but, um, assuming that we can't, don't have the technology to do it. Then we're, then when we're on a Zoom meeting. Unless, unless the governor says, so we should be planning for a Zoom meeting until we hear, right? And then if not, then.
Well, no, because right now, the executive orders expire on the twentieth, which means. We, we have to go back to in-person meetings.
Yep.
Or hybrid, but we're not really set up yet for the hybrid, so it would be an in-person meeting. But this new information that the executive orders may be extended would go, would send us back to a Zoom. And we're, we're, we're.
Got it. I'm getting it.
You know, we, we've been doing that for plenty long enough. So more to come, probably the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, I would think. But we're also backed up against this deadline for the warning of the meeting, which has to include how we're, um, providing. Public access.
Well, that's, that's it, that's their damn fault, then. They can figure it out, and if they want to kill us or put us on censure or take our town charter away, whatever.
We don't have one of those.
Well, there you go.
So I'll, I will keep you posted.
Well, that, that's my one question to Zoom is, let's say we have a, a meeting like we did the other night for the budget hearing. And I got a lot of phone calls from people that said they were trying to get on the meeting, but were never entered into the meeting. How do we keep track of that?
Keep track of what?
People who are sitting waiting for the host to let them in, and they don't. How, if there's a problem that exists for people that are gonna vote at a town meeting, and all of a sudden we all have, have a. List of, say, twenty-three people say they couldn't get into the meeting to vote. What, what are the recourse is on that gonna be? And how is that tracked? Do, does that light up somewhere to say how many people were waiting to get into the room? That couldn't get into the room?
I don't believe there's a record of. I don't believe there's a record of who is in the waiting room.
Right.
But Joyce, you're pushing people through there.
Cause all of a sudden, if one person is letting people into the room and you get three hundred people all at once at the starting of the meeting.
Well, the host, so the host, at the co, the host and the co-host. Can enter people, can admit people to the meeting. They can be done one at a time through a button, or they can be done, admit all through the participants pane.
Okay, and I do have a question about the budget hearing, why some people said that they were not let into the meeting? So, but that'll be another question, and, and that's what worries me about this meeting, a budget meeting. On Zoom.
So they were in the waiting room?
Yep, that's what they said. And then I also had a bunch of people said they couldn't get through at all, couldn't get in.
So there was. You know what? I'm gonna just defer to Nancy. Have you been in touch with Nancy?
No, I haven't been in touch.
Okay, I just don't wanna speak out of turn.
No. Asking how the press process works for the future rather than the past, so. So we're gonna have to figure that out, if that's gonna happen, when you're gonna all of a sudden have four or five hundred people trying to get in on a Zoom meeting. And.
Well.
A glitch happens and all of a sudden fifty people don't get let in, what recourse do they have to say they couldn't get in? If you don't have proof who was waiting to get in, you know what I'm saying?
Joyce, what's our um, participant? Limit for accounts?
I'd have to double check, but I think it's five hundred or a thousand. But I can double check that.
And we should.
That's my only question, something to think about.
Yeah, can you also just chase down if there's any? Information data report that shows who wasn't admitted? I don't think there is, but.
Yep.
It's worth asking the question of them. There is a way to register people, so we can set it up where you have to register, but then. It's, you know, you're adding a step to the process, so I don't know if that. Other than knowing who's gonna be coming to the meeting rather than not knowing, and then those people don't get admitted. I don't know if it makes sense to add another step.
But you are having a vote that night, correct?
Yeah, you have to have a vote, so you should probably have a record.
So how are you gonna know, right? I mean, if you don't have a record of who's actually voting, you don't, you're gonna have people that maybe they aren't taxpayers voting.
Right, they, they will have to, um. Everybody's gonna have to have their name and the registrar of voters, from what I understand, has to. Verify, I guess is the most correct term, um, who's able to vote.
So that's gonna take a fairly long time then. I mean, I, I'm just saying, it doesn't take a long time at the town hall, cause we only have. Go up, but all of a sudden, if you have a lot of people in town decide, I'm gonna jump on the Zoom meeting and watch a budget meeting, cause I don't have to get my car to drive down to the town hall.
Yep.
Or may only have ten.
I, I, yeah.
Or if we just go with letting anybody vote that wants to vote.
Well, I think we have to talk to the ROVs about that, cause there is a process. Is there, is there an executive order specifically on that, Dar, that you know of?
Who can vote?
About how to verify voters over a virtual platform?
No, there was never, nothing was addressed by executive order.
We can also, we can ask cost and CCM. Yeah, it makes Lynn put in the chat, why not have an additional co-host? So definitely, we should always have at least a host and a co-host as a backstop. And that also doubles the amount of people who can check people in from the waiting room.
Maybe the ROVs are the. Co-hosts.
Yep, yeah, that's not a bad idea, and they verify as they come into the waiting.
I think you need to check to see how this process works, cause it's, uh, somebody had to have thought about it.
Yeah. Um, it's, we've seen it done in a couple of different ways in some of the towns in the northwest corner. But yeah, and I would imagine we would use the polling feature. Just to make it clean, but yeah, we can um, do more homework on that. So we now have, we need to approve the annual budget meeting agenda. Which you all received. Joyce, you sent that out today?
I did, but it's gonna be hard to approve it if we don't know where we're having it.
Right, so, um.
So we skipped over the, the actual budget?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so that was in there, as Joyce put it in there as a placeholder, in case the Board of Finance. If anything was sent back via the hearing, because this is sent out before the hearing.
Well, now that it's on the agenda, which I think is good, um, I, I'd like to just apologize to the Board of Finance and to the people in the uh, audience for the hearing. Because the Board of Finance did by process on the two, uh, on the grant line, did come back and ask us to review that. Uh, I went back and reviewed all the minutes and, and we clearly dropped the ball by not, we being the Board of Selectmen, by not answering those specific requests that came in from us. Uh, came, I'm sorry, came in from them. So, you know, I think that we did not answer them, what we came away with, uh, we got distracted, I believe, because we started talking about offsetting income. Uh, and we got distracted because of philosophy, uh, and, and, and. While we didn't ever really get the philosophy from the Board of Finance, uh, they did, did their job in asking us to reconsider those two lines, as Jim Blackhatter pointed out. Uh, that said, you know, we still didn't get any direction from them as to why they wanted to increase, or why they thought that should be done, and I think that. I just say that again, I think that that was important, um, but I did wanna make that note. The, um, Joe Agley asked a question about the. You know, within the, the constraints of the budget, and I think. If I understood Joe's question correctly, and I did call him to clarify, um, he was speaking specifically about the federal funds money, what's it called, the AA? ARPA, okay, so really, I think his question was specifically on that money, of which some of it's in next year's budget and some of it's in this year's budget, correct?
Um, none of that's in any budget.
Not budget, it's revenue that is being received this year and next year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was his line of questioning, so. Uh, and I think at some point we need to discuss that, because the question on the table that he had was. If we have this money coming in this year, which was to the tune of, what was it, a hundred and eighty?
No, about two seven, uh, yeah, one, was it one thirty? It's two seventy. Barbara, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it's like one thirty plus or minus each year.
Correct, okay, thank you for, for doing that. The question is, who decides which groups? Uh, you know, the, or, or not who decides it, there's probably a list of who's qualif, qualifies, correct? And of that, who then decides? Which groups get it and for how much? Is it A, the Board of Selectmen? B, the Board of Finance, C, all that, uh, the, the town taxpayer by vote, or all of the above?
It's not gonna be the taxpayers. This money is coming to the town with criteria as to how it can be used. So that's the first level of dis, decision-making. Once that level of decision-making has been satisfied, it goes to the next level of decision-making. And actually, we just got an email today that said more information will be forthcoming, so that even hasn't been a hundred percent decided. We don't know yet.
Right.
How the process is going to work.
We're still waiting guidance from Treasury on that.
So in that guidance, it will tell us who will make that decision?
It should.
It should, okay.
Right.
All right, well, that's just, that was his question, and I just wanted to, uh, it, it piqued my interest, I called him and, and, and that's, that's. And so he got the answer from the Board of Finance, that the taxpayers would be making that decision, and that is not correct, right?
Well, I think the answer that he got about the taxpayers was because.
I know, yeah.
Understood the question to be re, relevant to the budget.
Right.
Money that's coming is outside of the budget.
Right, I, I explained that to him, and, and he got, he got that, he understood that where that went off track, but.
So really.
To answer his question. It won't be, to answer his question, it will not be a taxpayer vote, it will be a decision that's made either by the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, or a combination thereof. Is likely.
Or the government.
Or the government.
Yeah, the government's really deciding.
Okay, thank you. Um, and with respect to the budget, uh, the. I, I noticed we had some notes in, in there, which some were helpful, some were, I mean, I don't know whether they were relevant or not. Um, cause I think in the past, what we had is we had a budget that didn't have comments, but a budget that basically said, uh, request, there was a requested column, I believe, if I remember correctly. So I just put that out there, because I think they, sometimes those comments can be confusing, and also. Uh, actually, a little misleading in some, some situations, uh, specifically. One of the questions I had was a true program on the funding there, do we have contracts on those? From the, from the, from the, from the, from the individual groups that said they were going to participate, I'm picking up on, on one of the comment columns, you know, one of the comments that said. Partially funded by grants or, you know, money received from Kent School and from. Like the other one was.
High Watch.
High Watch. So do we have actual signed contracts that they're gonna do that?
Not at this point. In the past, when the program first started, we did, and then Bruce sort of migrated to verbal contracts, and that's what we've had for the past couple of years. I'm not sure what the status is yet, or if Jean has had discussions with them at this point yet.
I haven't heard from, from them, what's gone with the past practice has been Barbara sends out a. I wouldn't, would you call it an invoice? I wouldn't really call it an invoice.
Yeah, actually, I, I do send out an invoice.
Okay, so it's sent out towards the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, um, and I'm, I'm reading the note, Barbara, and it says, uh, Kent, South Kent School and Kent School, so I know High Watch has done it in the past, do they, are we anticipating them?
Well, that's a little bit of confusion, because last year, I believe the agreement was that. High Watch would send their donation directly to the fire department.
Yep, I remember that.
So I don't believe that High Watch was included in this current year budget. That we're working off of right now.
Well, I hope, I hope the High Watch will be as generous as they, to the fire department as they were before. And, okay, that's, uh, thank you on that. Okay, I think that's pretty much all I wanted to mention. On the budget, thank you.
So, um, back to the agenda, so the. Pinch point is, we don't have a. A how? Do we wanna hold this off and we'll do a special meeting to get this? Approved, or can we, and I was. Barbara sent the statute where I think it lives, um, can we? Approve the, the agenda with a TBA as far as location?
Is that a question to me?
Um.
Cause I don't know.
Okay, it wasn't specifically to you, um, I'm just looking in this statute that. We were looking at before. That doesn't really, yeah, it doesn't address it.
Why don't you just, why don't you just find out, and then let's just call a special meeting to handle that?
Okay.
We really need to find, you know, find that out, just get whoever has to tell us, tell us.
Well, I, right. If it were that simple, it would be fantastic.
Well, somebody's gotta know. Somebody's gotta know if you can put a, out a notice that says, you, you know, place to be.
Oh, I thought you were asking of which, which is gonna happen as far as the executive orders. Yeah, we can certainly.
Well, I think you can still say that there's gonna be. I, I don't, when you get into that legal stuff, I don't know, I think you just need to talk to somebody who knows how to follow those, those rules.
Okay. Old business, town hall opening, um. I'd been looking.
Tax, tax abatement list, do you need to do?
I don't see that, that's not on my agenda, but I have a feeling I have the wrong agenda.
Well, I could, but it.
You're probably right. I.
Can I write that down and give that to someone?
What, that you're probably right, you're.
Yeah, my wife, I gotta write that down.
Theme for you, though. Of course, my internet is nice and slow, so, um, Debbie, do you wanna? Is she still on? Yes, um. Debbie, do you want to?
I can. I don't have the list in front of me with the individual names, but I do make a motion or whatever, I. Uh, we have met as a committee with the town attorney and by ourselves for quite a few meetings, and there is a list. That has been presented and approved, not approved, has been sent to you for approval.
All right, I, I don't recall seeing that list.
Oh, okay, and that's for the thousand dollar off the taxes.
And have you guys seen that?
Yes, we have all seen it, I'm sorry, I thought it was being sent to you, um.
I may have been, I've been. Sometimes miss things, did you guys, the other selectmen get it?
Debbie, was this the one that was sent out a few months ago?
Yes. Because we were, we did not make any changes to that second list.
See if I can. Whip it up here. That would have been. February?
Probably.
I do remember you sending it out, but it was some time ago.
Well, yes. Darlene, do you have anything to add?
No, I remember seeing.
I was going to just say that actually, based on the last meeting that we had, there was the clarification that it truly is, the Board of Selectmen isn't approving the list. It's more or less the acceptance of the list, so as is, as an important factor there, it, yes, it's great that you all saw it. Um, but it doesn't have to be approved in the sense of the dollar amount. But it doesn't have to be approved in the sense of the dollar amount or the names that are listed on it. It's an acceptance of it. So just to make sure the motion says that.
Yeah. Looking around for it. I'm not finding it, but I know that we received it.
I got it. I remember I saw.
So do we want to proceed with a motion? Do we want to get the list again? And because we know we're gonna be seeing a special meeting. Debbie, what's our the deadline is?
Actually, I'm going to defer to the assessor, Jen Dubray. She's the one who has to administer this. If she's still on. Maybe not. The sooner the better. The bills are going out for printing by Memorial Day.
Yeah, I agree. Sooner the better. Isn't that list generated by the firemen? If that's
Yeah, that's right, but we accept the list as.
I understand, but I just wanted to say where you're looking for it to come from. Wouldn't be Debbie, it would be from the fireman.
Yeah, I thought it was from, I thought Debbie sent it out.
We did. We received it from the fire department. It's supposed to be filed with my office and the Board of Selectmen. We split after it's been reviewed and acknowledged by the tax collector and town clerk.
Okay.
I would, I would make a motion, but I don't think I can. So Chris, if you could make the motion, I appreciate it. Do you accept the tax payment list approval?
I, I do accept, make a motion to accept the tax abatement list approval as reviewed by the tax collector and assessor.
I'll second that. And, and, and the town clerk and
Right.
I'm sorry, and the, and the town clerk.
Any more questions? All those in favor of accepting the list from the town? I. So we, going back to the Town Hall opening, just in conversations with other towns up until, again, a few hours ago, we're planning for June 1st. I need to meet with all the departments to have a conversation. That's where we were heading, but I need to we need to hear back from the governor on this.
So the same thing applies with the Town Hall, the governor?
Yeah, the executive orders and stay in place. We need to it's, you know, paramount that we protect the public, protect staff, keep town government running.
But again, I'm just trying to understand it. There's a, the governor can say this, meaning he can extend the, the, what did you call it?
Executive orders.
Executive order, okay. But you could decide to open Town Hall, correct?
I could.
Okay, I would urge you to consider that very heavily because in reviewing the Zoom meetings via you know, when I was looking at the minutes and all, I think there's, there's a great deal of process that's lost because you don't have a room of people exchanging and interacting the way we are, as humans are used to. It seems to me that it's fairly easy to get caught in a thread going the wrong way without people bringing us back. So I would strongly urge to figure out a way that we could at least, the selectmen could at least meet or other place, other boards and groups that feel that they might be lacking that because I know most people are vaccinated, and I know Connecticut is, is probably one of the leading in the country. So I just would urge that.
And I don't disagree with most of what you're saying. There's the, you know, the executive orders, we are, we've all been reminded hundreds and hundreds of times that they have the force of law. Randy has said that to me hundreds and hundreds of times. So you know, we, there is risk in flying in the face of that. So it's something that we have to seriously consider. I know that you have all along had, you know, your thoughts about why is Town Hall closed? Why don't, why don't we just open up? But when we're, we're, we're following that force of law, it's, it it keeps us in a safe place from as far as liability, but absolutely will continue to move forward in hopes that this, they expire on the 20th, and we'll focus to just get open for June 1st. Streetscape Building Committee.
Did we get that last right away, signed, or is Webster Bank still being a pain in the tuchus?
Well, Webster Bank wrote their own.
Yep.
Let me just make sure I sent Randy, Randy a nudge just before this meeting. Nothing, I don't have anything from him. I'll, you know, I'll give him a call in the morning. They sent that, you know, revised document to you on, when was that, Chris Thursday? Can't remember, I was in the car.
Yeah, no, it was earlier than that, but whatever, it doesn't matter. It's, it's to Randy, he has it, and so we just need to get his attention. But, you know.
And, and I, he may, you know, that email that you sent said something about you know, implying that the, the two, the attorneys should be just going back and forth directly. So Randy may have, you know, spoken to them today or yesterday. I don't know, I haven't heard back from him, but I will give him a call in the morning. Anything, Ed, anything else on Streetscape?
No, I, they were planning on having a meeting, I thought, this week, but if we don't have that back from them yet, I don't know if we're still having one or not. I saw it on the, on my list of stuff to read tonight. It, it was pretty frustrating for the committee not getting that back, I know that. Of course, I made the dumb recommendation, maybe we should just skip that part of the project there. If they don't send it back, so put it out to bid, and they didn't want to leave it out for now, so. So we're waiting.
Swift House Roof Replacement Subcommittee.
I have nothing on that to report.
I don't see Zan. Chris, do you know, do you have any update from her?
No, we haven't really done much. But I think what's, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll get it to, I'll focus on it for next, next month. I'll definitely do that.
Main Street Noise Traffic, twice. Joyce got this. So it's duplicate. Chris, anything on Main Street Noise and Traffic?
Nope. No, I just think I, I am talking to people on Main Street, and they're concerned that we're gonna have a lot more people in, in traffic, and especially people wanting to eat outside, people wanting to picking up food, hanging out on, on the sidewalks. And I don't know, I think we just have to think about what I don't know if any of that, if that federal money pertains to, to dealing with, with this kind of thing, but I don't know. It clearly needs some funding, and I don't know how to, to do that right now. Certainly not into this year's budget.
Well, if I can make one quick comment, Chris, what you might find interesting, I spoke to a person that went to Weathersfield to have his motorcycle inspected for a VIN number and do the inspection, and the person with the motorcycle in front of him had straight pipes on it, and it passed the state inspection in Weathersfield, just so you know that. So they are passing motorcycles with straight pipes to become registered. So if the state's not gonna require it, I think if we're gonna have a pretty hard time requiring it, I just thought you'd find that pretty amazing to find out. Cause there is a law that says they're supposed to have baffles in them, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wish it were just the, the, you know, one issue, but it's not just the motorcycles. It's, it's, it's the traffic itself downtown and you know, I just, if something tragic happens, that would just be really, really tough, so. I think we can use this, this summer maybe as a barometer to see how it is, especially with people coming out and about.
Andrew and I did talk today about increasing speed enforcement around town as the weather continues. Anytime we get a request from the public, it goes on Andrew's sort of cycle of roads that he does speed enforcement on, so he's always got that, and we're gonna, you know, increase enforcement. And he also will pass it along to the you know, the road troopers that are on duty when he's not on duty. So they'll be doing speed enforcement on, you know, on all different various roads. And we do have those, the new your speed signs. They're giving Rick some fits and starts as far as putting them up. They're much more how would you term it, Rick? They're much more unwieldy than the ones that we currently have. They have much bigger solar panels. They have to go on a, a different sized post, and it's been much more complicated than it had been in the past with the old signs. But he's working on it, and we have a list here of where they're gonna get placed first, and then they'll, they'll rotate as we get data and report out the data. The hiring guidance, there were four emails in your packets on the feedback. And I think we have everybody who submitted those emails. So some was feedback, some was just sort of communications. Debbie provided feedback. Donna provided her process for the for land use clerk that they go through pursuant to their bylaws. So Donna, where do I, is Donna still on? There you are, the ship. You have bylaws for inland wetlands and P and Z, correct?
That's correct.
So they are following their process pursuant to that. And the communications from Barbara were just back and forth with the decision-making for her clerk and the Board of Finance meeting two weeks ago, Nancy they chose to assign their own hiring committee. They felt it was overreached by the Board of Selectmen to have this process in place, and so they have decided that they're gonna take their own process to hire the Board of Finance clerk. So I think all the intentions were good. But there's a lot of other components at play. I think the process is still a little bit too clunky. We need to go back to the drawing board with this. Or just clarify what's in the current policy.
I think that's the place to start. I think we just need to get the policy and then just set the, set the, whatever that policy is. And where it, where it clashes with some other groups. I don't know, what, what are they, their?
Their document, foundation documents, really.
Their documents, then we will have to deal with that and figure it out. Overreach.
Selectmen's reports.
I'll go first. All I have to say is that I've noticed the a lot more people, like Chris was saying, in town, I noticed a lot more jaywalking, people not walking in the crosswalks. This last weekend was way out of control. And maybe you could mention that to the town trooper also to report that. I mean, and there's people walking out from in between cars. There were a lot more bicycles on sidewalks, I noticed. There was even a bicyclist wa, riding the opposite direction up past the Episcopal Church up Main Street in the, in the southbound lane, but he was going north in the north. He was going north in the southbound lane. And my other, other question was the selectmen have never approved the budget to be presented for the budget for the budget meeting as, as put in the book. So if.
Not sure what you mean.
Well, we, we approved the budget to be presented to the Board of Finance without the EMS director's stipend. And it got presented, and so what I'm saying is the, the budget that's being presented to the town account has not been officially voted on by the selectmen. So that's in my report, just so the townspeople know, we have not voted on this budget that's being presented for the 21st. And that's it for my report.
But we moved it at the March meeting.
We did not, we moved the budget. We voted for the budget as presented to us that, at that meeting, but that is not the budget that's being proposed to the town.
But the budget that goes to the town has to become from the recommendation of the Board of Finance.
You're absolutely correct. And we did not recommend that budget that went to the Board of Finance. We recommended the budget that went to the Board of Finance. And they have changed it, and we have not voted on this budget that is being presented to the town account as red.
I don't think you have to vote on it.
No, that's fine.
No, yeah.
So why do we, why do we bother even presenting it? Why don't we just hand it, sit and hand it to the Board of Finance, our budget, without a vote then? Why did we, oh, why did we ever vote in the first place?
To have a consensus to move it forward in the process. I'm not sure I understand your question.
There, it isn't a question. My statement is we never voted on this budget that is being presented on May 21st to the town of Kent.
Right, but.
That's it. That's my statement, and I don't need any questions back. That's all. No, that's, and that's the end of my report.
Chris, do you have anything?
I'm good, thanks.
So just briefly, I think I've, there's, you know, continues to be a lot going on with the pandemic. We've struck up a really great partnership with New Melford Health Department. They were able to help us with the blocks of vaccine appointments. They also stood up very quickly a a pre-registration form for families who had 12 to 15-year-olds, and that I'm sure ticked off today, this morning, when the And that I'm sure ticked off today, this morning, when the emergency authorization came through with the FDA for the Pfizer. So that's, that's been a great, really great partnership. Our daily case rate remains low. The state actually asked us to add a a day to our testing because they're demobilizing a lot of the other testing sites. So Cert was able to stand that up pretty quickly. So we have testing on Mondays and Thursdays now, same timeframe, three to seven. Continue to work with the state on multiple different sort of micro projects related to COVID with emergency management. Emergency management has also been working with Kenmont Camp on their planning for opening and the schools. We have one more school to graduate their class of seniors. And that's been another really useful information sharing among the three schools. We were meeting weekly and then we were meeting every other week and continued to meet throughout at their request because it's been such a, a great working partnership. Emergency Management, Social Services has arranged with the, our VNA to vaccinate homebound people. That was a big gap that we needed to take care of. So we met with our VNA and they're, they're taking that on. The loss of the Kent Primary Care Practice, there were a number of residents who came to me alarmed and disappointed that NuVance is closing that practice. We met with NuVance with a couple of residents so that NuVance could sort of give them the, the why as to the, the ending of the practice in Kent. And I'm working, having conversations with NuVance to see if, you know, they would be interested in bringing some alternative models to town to continue our, to continue to get people to primary care. We have a transportation issue. They have committed to helping us with that. So we're looking at that. There's also telehealth piece. And I was actually approached by another hospital system in the state who had heard the practice was closing. So there's another hospital system that's also, we're in conversations just to, just as far as outreach. The legislative session continues to move like a freight train. Darlene gave me, ooh, was that 183? Yes, Bill number 183, which is really pertinent to a lot of the discussion tonight, which allows for that Zoom platform to continue to happen. So that's working its way through the legislature. The bottle bill is continuing to work its way through. It's, there's been some rewriting done to it, but it has been moving. I don't, there's nothing right now on the cell tower update. The Medic 4 contract, we met with the six other town CEOs a week ago, I want to say. And there's some conversations that we're starting with Trinity, which is the current provider. But there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen to see where that contract is gonna go. Those are the highlights for me. Anything else as far as reports? So we are going to adjourn at eight 24. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Enjoy the nice weather.